Thanks, Chris. It's now six thirty. I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law and notification, and adopt the agenda. You'd all please stand with me at the pledge and flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we, the first up is going to be comments from audience regarding agenda items. Seeing as we have no audience tonight, I think we can, he's actually, he's from Baird.
From Baird.
Not to ignore you, but I know you're not someone here from the...
Wow, no respect.
So we'll skip to number four, gifts and donations, recognition students, staff spotlight. Is American Transmission Company and the Milwaukee Bucks donation Trees for Threes program? Who's going to discuss that?
Quite frankly, I was hoping maybe principals would be able to. I'm aware of C.
And as they're all stepping up to the three-point line to take it.
Whose donations were, whose donations are these?
Chris. Fantastic. So we got a donation. Here, we can read it. So, presented Whitnall School District with $375 to the purchase of trees. The partnership between ATC and Milwaukee Bucks awards schools one tree for every three-point shot the Bucks made at home during the 2017-18 regular season. The Bucks scored 343 three-pointers this season, and eighty-three schools across ATC's service area receive funding for threes through this program. So thank you to ATC and the Milwaukee Bucks for donating the $375 for the purchase of trees.
All right.
The next one.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, wait, I have to read that one now, so thank you. Thanks for that. So B is donation from Johnny Appleseed, since we're keeping with the tree.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Well, that probably was for, for all the work.
It is. It's part of our, it's part of our ordering that we do, that Jody Sabar does for our Common Schools funds, and one of the companies gave us a $300 gift card to use, really in any way that the library sees fit. So, this is the first year that she's gotten that, so she's excited, and she's going to kind of put it. Jody Sabar is our media, our library media specialist, so she'll spread that out across the libraries. It's a nice little gift we got from them, so we're appreciative.
And the third one was, came as a surprise to me, to be honest. There was an anonymous donor that donated to the Greater Milwaukee Foundation. Still have not figured out who that anonymous donor is, but the money would go towards, it was designated for anti-bullying programming or food allergy awareness, and the last, or an area of greater need. So, we'll put a committee together at the school level and determine how we're going to use those funds, and we'll certainly communicate that back. But I'm assuming it's somebody who's been connected to us in the past, who's seen that we've been doing some of these programming options in our school.
And again, that was a grant for $3,000.
That's right.
For Edgerton Elementary.
Yeah, quite an amazing surprise, actually, so.
So, it wasn't like a big grant that different schools or schools, yeah, we just got, it appeared.
Some, it appears that somebody anonymously donated to Edgerton that money, so, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, now that we made it through that item, we'll move on to five consent agenda. Five A is approval of May vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of April 23rd and May 14th, 2018 school board minutes. C is approval of personnel recommendations. D is approval of bank signatories. E is acceptance of Greater Milwaukee Foundation grant. F is approval of 2018-19 Board of Education meeting dates. And G is approval of 2018-19 CISA number one contract. Would anyone like to pull an item?
Oh, yeah, C and D.
C and D, okay.
On my computer, so.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve items A, B, E, F, and G.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, item C?
Well, my computer just says, oops, there's a problem loading this page.
So did mine.
I believe that...
Oh, so is yours?
Yeah.
Okay, anyways, so if I remember right, there was no explanation in the box for this individual.
It's a resignation.
It's a resignation.
Okay, but it doesn't say that, does it? As were the other ones.
It's because it's black.
It's black. Something happened when it PDFed.
Must have happened when it was...
Right, the rest of them, I mean, the last batch that we got, there was, in comments, there was whatever it was, so that's what I needed to know.
It's a resignation.
In those black boxes, it should have said hires, resignation. Something happened in the electronic translation that the titles went away.
Yep.
But the letters were packeted.
Correct, so.
All right, that's good.
Okay, and then D?
Maybe we should just see what this is.
Approval of bank signatories?
Mm-hmm.
So, with American Deposit Management, they need people on record that are able to do business with the bank during the referendum process. And so, in this instance, we're putting forth myself and Lisa to be those representatives that are able to do that business. Some cases, action is only needed on one of our signatures. Sometimes, action will be required for both, but to open up this, this account, thank you, through ADM, they need to have somebody on record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve items C and D.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. So move on to item six A, 2018-19 technology purchases. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Six B, late registration fees, and take a motion to approve?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item C, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a $10 million bond anticipation note pursuant to section 67.121B Wisconsin statutes. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
All right.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, so, if we go this route, we're going the step method, right?
This has nothing to do with the steps.
This is just, okay, this is just $10, $10 million this year, and then remainder next year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that comes later in the process. Again, this is Jordan Masnikov from Baird. If there are any, any questions for him while he's here, he's certainly able and willing to answer those questions if there's any detail that you'd like to dive into. But, as Quinn alluded to, no, this is not for any sort of step process. That comes, comes later in the, in the process.
So then, what's the difference between C and D?
That's what I was going to ask.
Jordan, go ahead.
So, C is...
Who are you, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Can you say who you are today? My name is Jordan Masnikov. I'm with Robert W. Baird and Company. I'm here on Lisa's behalf, who was just here last week. So, C is, is your initial financing. So, this, think of it as like a construction loan, if you're building a house. So, you're going to get the financing. Once this issue closes, that's when you get the funds. Resolution D is giving us permission, setting forth certain parameters where, as long as we meet those parameters, we can issue the long-term bonds to essentially refund this short-term note that we're taking out right now. So, rather than having to issue those long-term bonds on a board meeting date and be beholden to one specific date, this gives us flexibility to price those bonds in the market when it's most advantageous for you guys.
And never on Mondays.
Or Fridays.
Lisa does not like Mondays. No bonds priced on Fridays. Almost zero bonds priced on Fridays. The reason, especially in Wisconsin, we don't do Mondays, is a lot of board meetings like this on Mondays. So, you have a lot of bond issues stacking on top of each other that are very similar. So, you don't want to compete with other districts. You'd rather be the only name out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. And then D, resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $10 million general obligation refunding bonds. Take a first? Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
E, administrator compensation. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, I can't find it, but, so, it's just different than what we've done in the past. You've clumped a total value, dollar value for that, for that, and then, who decides what goes where?
Lisa.
Lisa does. Okay. Good enough for me.
But that's, I believe it says per how it was discussed in our closed meeting last week.
Correct.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. F, professional and technical compensation. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And G, support staff compensation. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Onto seven, reports. A superintendent report and monthly update of district goals.
Kathy has the update up there. It's also in your folder lately, or later, if you want to take a look at it, but I'll just go through the same nine goals as we have been, and updates there. Some of them have been obvious because we've been discussing them outside of the monthly update. But the first one, first goal, again, talks about our learning environment, academic achievement, things like our curriculum audit, personalizing learning, and then RTI. And so, updates for this month specifically is that we did a little bit more targeted letters home to our middle school students specifically, but students who qualified for Title I. We spent a lot of time, as I shared this week, cleaning up our intervention piece. Our elementaries were in a good place with how we were benchmarking and identifying students. Our middle school needed a little bit more assistance on that, and once we did that switch in early February, we continued to monitor those students, but also sent out invitations for them for summer school in terms of their needs, so we can continue. We know that sometimes it's referred to as the reading summer slide, if students fall behind, and continued that, so we also did that. In addition to that, Lynn continues to work with our group of teachers on our district personalizing learning team that we received that grant for at CISA I, and so they had another meeting, and they're planning for some intense time this summer working on that and prioritizing what our focus areas. K-12, that all students will have, and specifically, it's around having a learner profile, so identifying some very unique things. And each year, we would update that learner profile, so that student becomes a lot more acclimated to, they know how they learn, what they learn, as does every adult who's working within the system. Goal number two talked about our achievement and our, the rigor piece of this. Last month, we talked about the rigor relevance relationships framework. And so, when we look at that behavior data, we just, and achievement data, we just finished up our STAR reporting, which is not the statewide testing, it's our district testing that we do. We did some in fall, we'll do some in spring, and Amy Stunsler, our coordinator, we may bring her in June to talk about what those gains are. Again, it gives us a glimpse at trying to decide how much did we grow with? Does it give us a snapshot potentially of what we could be doing on the statewide tests? We'll see. We internally have calculated what our juniors did on the ACT test, but I'm not going to publicly say, because we could do that, because we haven't gotten back the summary statement as a district, but we do get the individual ones, so we know where, that our juniors who just took it compared to last year's juniors, know that the ACT score that gets reported to the state is actually the senior ACT score. So, we know that some students will retake the ACT, and so, that composite ACT that you get reported statewide is different than the junior one, but we still have different benchmarks in there and want to use that metric to, as does ACT too. Does it make a difference if you take it more than once, and all of those variables that go into that? So, we do internally have what, what our juniors are compared to last year's juniors. The college career readiness piece of it, we're going to continue, we're moving forward with the Building Trades Institute. Mesquigo also joined us in that initiative with one of the districts that are doing that. We are now trying to really work on, as our course registrations finished up at the middle school, we're meeting later this week to talk about our, our tech ed 612, the Makers Lab and how that fits in, and as we are offering some new computer science coding classes at 612, and how does that fit into what Dave Hust is doing here at the high school. So, remember, we identified three career pathways, health sciences, manufacturing, and computer science IT. And so, we're, through our course registrations at the middle school, and that are really starting to develop those pathways for students. So, we're continuing to work with that, and look at that curriculum, and then also look at what we might be able to offer K-5 in terms of some coding opportunities for our students to get them engaged in. There's some interest both by staff in trying to do that, and the time that we have, I'm allowed for that. We did talk a little bit this morning at our director's meeting about, as we collaborate with some of the other districts in the area, back-to-school activities, and one of them does relate to having our teachers connect with post-secondary and the workplace to have them realize what are we preparing our students for? And obviously, that's for some of them, 12 years away, but how is the workplace changed? Remember, some of our teachers have known nothing else but the world of academia, and so for them to prepare students for a world that maybe some of our own educators have not worked in, there is a gap sometimes. And so, we're trying to look at some of our back-to-school activities where we can bring our educators into workplaces, just to see how that's changed, and listen to employers directly about what has changed. How are they, how are they changing? Because the workforce is changing, both in who is coming in and what they need, and also post-secondary, because we're hearing from that, but we're not sure it's always making its way down to our educators, and they're the ones who are directly in the classroom with our students. Goal number four had to do with our district communication. We are, the Whitnall window is ready almost to, with some exceptions of putting in some final touches and graduation photos, to be sent out the week right after graduation. So, the goal is that's when it would be received, in terms of what we're doing there. It's four pages longer than the other additions this year, just because we have a lot more to share and sort of cover the entire year with what we've been doing, and lots of good news things to share there also. Goal number five was specific to the referendum, and so, obviously, after April, some of that is focused a little bit, but in the Whitnall window, going along with that, there are, there is a page that's dedicated to the financing options that we've been talking about, and to the construction model options. And so, that will go to the, to the community, so they know that the decisions that the board is looking at over the summer, and where to stay tuned, and how they can become engaged in it. So, Mike is working on putting that out to the community, so they know the decisions that the board is, with what Lisa Voison shared last week, and what we did before that with Bray in terms of those two models and the options that the board has to decide. I think there was some conversation last week about what will that look like when the mill rate isn't necessarily what was published, and so it's important for us to get out in front of that and get that out there, and the Whitnall window seems to be the, the best communication to get to all of our households, since it's a hard copy, and we know that it gets direct mailed to all of those. So, that'll be in that early June publication that goes out. Goal number six, related to the financial plan, and I think part of it is, and Mike will talk a little bit more about, some of our health insurance. We have not had a working model for that for a while, and so, just as we continue to build some models instead of being reactionary, whether it's health insurance or facilities or all of that stuff, really trying to get some, and it, it'll take a couple of years to build a model, because you're trying to build like, you know, how accurate it was when you don't have a model in place in terms of trying to project that. And that's why having the monthly financial quarter, report on here to say where are we over or under, but also then internally putting some measures in place for us to be able to guide us, because I think in the past, it's sort of, we got to the year end and then realized we were over or under. So, it's sort of, it's sort of, you know, as we develop some of those indicators, it'll still be a little bit fuzzy for a while. The other part of that that we're working on is, as you just heard, our referendum debt and what that allows us to do and how we structure that. So, that is part of our long-term, at least midterm, financial budgeting and plan, depending upon how we structure that referendum debt. That plays into that now that we know the referendum passed.
So, let's go back to what you said about, in the past, and I would assume it's still going on. We get to the end of the year, and we don't know, and then we figure out we're over or behind, so, this is just roll the dice, or what's the deal here?
Well, no, I see in some areas, I don't know that there was on a month, like, where should we be? We know that we get cash in certain months, and we know that we will borrow in terms of that. Can we be a little bit more accurate when that falls into there? Or facilities planning, or supplies for teachers, or professional development, whatever it was. I don't know that we had a close monitoring on, like, this is where we should be in March, this is where we should be in November, in terms of the expenditures that we're outlaying. And I think it was trying to monitor that a little bit closer, and then explain that or the rationale, hey, this conference didn't happen, hey, this is what this means. And we do that, I would say, a little more informally than trying to formalize that more. And I think as administratively, our district leadership team, Mike is trying to make sure that we're all aware of those decisions globally, like, how one decision in one area impacts a different area, because I think it's been a lot more autonomous in that budgeting thing, and I think as we try to say they're the same dollars, no matter where they come from. And so, how this is here and how we're centralizing a lot of that. So, I think people have said, well, if I didn't spend $10 on a new box of crayons, that means that I have $10 to spend more on something else. And I think it's a little bit more global than that when we look at different, you know, different expenditures and that. So, part of it is an educating, learning thing, and then trying to benchmark and create some models. I mean, you know, different, if it's Baird or whomever have financial models that they've developed over years that, that you can get pretty consistent on by plugging in numbers. We don't have that quite yet locally, so part of it is to develop some of that reliable data to be able to tell when we really should be concerned, or that's typical to be seeing some of those ebbs and flows.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Seventh goal has to do with aligning all of our operational things as we continue to do that. Did want to share that we're getting ready, Todd Stacy and Kay Larson, and then Kathy are working on getting out our registration letter for families, so we can start registration earlier than we have in the past, and that links to the proposal the board just passed with late registration fees, but we're making it earlier to be open. And we'll include with the passing of the board tonight, the late registration fees, so we're communicating that out. And we talked just this morning, actually, about sending that out as a separate Infinite Campus message, because it does have high importance, as compared to putting it in other communication pieces. So, there's a draft of that, that that will be going out shortly. We're also continuing to put more things between EdgeaClimber and Infinite Campus, so we can sort of integrate a lot of our data, whether it's student achievement, behavior data. And the last thing is this Friday, from our support staff, talking about integration, an emphasis on customer service, so they are working with, we have a collaborative in-service day for our support staff from Greendale, Greenfield, and Whitnall, are working with MATC. They are doing the training. They have their instructors who are training our office support staff on customer service. And what are some of the other topics that they could have chosen from?
Google, Google skills and communication, the two.
Yep. So, are we, so for...
The third was, the third was social media, which didn't really apply to our support staff.
So, for half the day, they will be in a collaborative environment, office staff from the other districts, because we all had very similar needs for our office support staff, and in the afternoon, be working on some of the protocols and training for our Raptor system that we're using for the visitor check-in, that all of our buildings have very similar protocols, how that software works, that we have consistent check-in procedures for our visitors and volunteers. So, that's this Friday for our office support staff and that group of folks.
So, this would be the first full year of EdgeaClimber?
It will be the first full year, yep.
So, I assume we give a report next year?
You will. Lynn, look at all these reports you get to go soon. She's writing down.
Sure, pencil.
Yep. Goal number eight, and eight and nine really relate to our human resources, our staffing, and all of that. And so, the organizational chart, again, is out there. We're working on our talent management framework. We talked about getting hiring protocols and questions that are there that are consistent across the board, and I think administratively, we're feeling much more comfortable with the hiring protocols that are happening across the board, much more consistent, whether it's support staff or if it's teachers, because we're in the middle of, you know, prime teacher hiring system. And going with that, and goal number nine, I think some of the questions that we've been talking about, as we talk about what is a preferred culture here, and we spent a lot of time talking about where is our preferred culture at Whitnall, that we're making sure the questions we're asking in interviews relate to our preferred culture, instead of maybe what are just their standard ones. So, where we want to be, we want to make sure that we hire for our preferred culture, and then actually looking at the hiring process that we're using to make sure that we're hiring candidates that fit into our preferred culture, and maybe that wasn't always a consideration that we have been doing. And, goal nine also talks about the safety and security, so I'd be remiss if I did not mention our updated safety plan and procedures, which I have as one of the next agenda items, so I'll elaborate a little bit more in there, but that does relate to goal number nine in there, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So, moving on to B, referendum update.
I'm losing track, because we only had a board meeting a week ago. Did we meet since then? We met on Thursday?
We met on Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, our core team, it was the whole team. So it was Todd, Mike, and myself. Baird had four folks there, so we met the entire team that would be working, both architects, engineers that were from there. And so we talked about the drill-down piece, and so Lori's up next because we have some decisions to make with that building, both in terms of traffic flow and some other critical decisions. They did really rough options of what, like, to just get us thinking outside of how that science piece could look in the middle school, some, you know, ways of doing that. So we're going to be meeting with those science teachers next over there in that parts of that building. And then also started looking a little bit at configuring that space in the high school for STEM and that a little bit differently. And as Charlie's looking at some of those transitions, what does that look like then for that following year? It helped us look at timelines a little bit better, scheduling of courses to make sure we're being the least disruptive to courses as possible. And so that was critical. But we're, our next meeting is next Thursday, and we'll be starting to get some serious decisions in terms, especially at Hills Corners and at the high school where we've said this is a first-grade classroom, this is music, this is whatever. Those, we can flip a couple of those yet and make some key decisions, but we're going to get into that. One of the concerns for me at Hills Corners Elementary is that the village had contacted me about their concerns about parking, which has been an age-old problem, but we've had some changes there. And the concern, again, on God's sake of doing that. So I think to be able to share with them our long-term plan for alleviating some of that with our new construction, with both parking for staff and adding more spaces there and what the parent traffic will look like, will help there so they don't feel the impetus to create some unnecessary parking restrictions in the meantime, if they can bear with us, I think that will be helpful. So having that figured out, even that that won't take place for next school year, will at least help with the communications with the village there in terms of what that looks like. So I would say that's our referendum update, other than the financing stuff, which the board saw tonight.
Okay, great. C, strategic planning and student achievement data.
Since we met a week ago and there wasn't a lot between there, if the board has had any additional thoughts on that dashboard piece, I think Lynn and I have talked about having, you know, the part that's pretty broad that you saw, and then behind the scenes, as we workshop as a board and dig into student achievement, because the board should know the student achievement data better than the general public, like what goes into some of that data and some other, I guess, benchmarks that would lead into that. I think Steve and you had brought up that AP isn't just one metric, it could be made up of a lot of different things that we look at, and I think that that would be helpful behind the scenes, even though the main dashboard might only have one metric, so we can compare ourselves to how other districts do that, if you will. So are there any other thoughts of you, as you've had a week to look at what some of those other things are, or if anything else has jumped out at you in terms of that? We'll come back in June with some modified numbers. We're starting to get some data. We might be able to populate, so everything isn't 88%, as it was shown last week, be able to put some of those in there. But if there was any other thoughts, this would be-
Were you able to find anything other things for that last column?
Right now, no, other than the financial literacy piece and community service, I think, you know, the social emotional thing, a couple other districts have ventured out on that. I think as we get into the academic career planning, where students start to do some aptitude traits about themselves and get to know themselves better, that might be something that we can add in. The learner profiles, that a way to share that Lynn and her team are developing through personalizing learning, I think that that might give us a great tool to be able to talk about that, how the students are really able to almost workshop about them, what they know about themselves and learning. I think it's just a little bit premature in our district to add too many variables. And we want to jump the gun until something's been fully developed or something yet, but so we did, but if you all have come up with something, we're open to suggestions there.
Any thoughts right now, or? Okay, then we can keep talking about it and come again in June. Okay, great. And to S W S A report with Quinn.
No, there's no safety.
No.
School safety?
Just school safety. I apologize.
Okay, it's okay.
D, school safety and security, I'm sorry.
No, I shared with the board, and if you had a chance to look today, some communication that we had with the Greenfield Police about just, again, you know, staying vigilant with, you know, continued incidents that we look. So wanted to share that, you know, that there was a little bit increased presence, as we talked about, from here till the end of the school year with some events. We continue to reach out with protocols, with fire drills and different things like that. You know, now that they, the protocol used to be with announcing or not announcing and what that means, and then when to know. We talk about the time that you have to determine if it's a real fire, instead of immediately, like, do you have any time to determine if it's a real fire or not before you have to immediately send everybody out of the building? And I think that's the biggest concern right now, is that if it's an announced drill and adults know when it is, and an alarm goes off and it's not supposed to be an announced one, how will you know the validity of that? And so there's some things that we're just working with, you know, the fire department on. We did do walkthroughs, both of the Hills Corners and Greenfield Police Departments of our buildings, to help provide us some feedback that we might want to look at. We are in the middle of writing our grant for the school safety, more school violence, as the director calls it, and also our mental health grant in terms of what that is. Both of, both of them allow for us to write in training costs for trauma-informed care for our staff. We did provide some of it, our January in-service, so we're actually a little bit ahead of the game in some of those things for our staff here. So the question is, how do we provide level-two training if we want to, or any new teachers we bring on who did not have that? So our district actually did provide some of that with one of our in-services this year from St. Ace's. So training this Friday on the visitor check-in, and we continue to look at some of our protocols and procedures with our fire drills that we're holding in May, using vests and all of those types of things. They might seem simple, but they're pretty big deals when you talk about the day-to-day logistics of that. And I think people are feeling pretty good about having those protocols in place. But those are some updates overall with school safety, and we'll spend a chunk of time implementing a lot of the changes that we did into the school safety plan and reviewing even in more depth than we have up until this point. And we'll see what guidance the state continues to provide out. I know there was some conversations about the monthly fire drills as compared to other drills. What does that look like and what drills do we want to hold to make sure that we're prepared for anything that might happen?
I have two questions. Where do we, where do we stand for the safety training that is required to get funding?
The three hours of trauma-informed care? Jackie, do you want?
Oh, that was it.
Yep. Your St. Ace stuff, right? The trauma-informed care, do you want to, just what you found out from what we were provided?
There are multiple options that we can include for that time, depending on, we could do a repeat of the session that we did already, just for your, for any new staff members. And then they have like three different options that would be our next move, depending on which direction that you wanted to go. And all of those are the best options that ran.
For the school safety? Okay. And then administrators, please, and Lisa. So the scenario played out, as I understand, in Texas, that the student came in with a trench coat on to school, which would probably be a red flag in Houston, but maybe not here. Do we have people at, how would, do we have people at the, at the doors, what, looking, checking, not, I don't know, checking, but, you know, just looking at our students and anybody, because that, from what, 7:30 to 7:45, the doors are open, anybody can come in, right? What is the protocol?
I don't know that we have a person specifically at each door. We ask adults to be out in the hallway as much as possible.
At each door?
I wouldn't say not at doorways, I would say in the hallways. Again, it's just see something that looks out of line, but I don't, we do not have a dedicated person at any of our buildings that's just looking for that, or is sitting at a doorway looking for something that looks suspicious.
And we have more than one point entry at that time of day?
Between 7:00 and 7:45.
Or whatever it may be for elementary and the middle school. Pardon?
And two in the high school, the main entrance and then the athletic entrance are set to open.
And what about the middle school? Well, when the, when the buildings are open to the public prior to school, starting, no matter what level of education we're at.
I think middle school has one that's not fobbed. There's only one at the middle school that's not fobbed in, so students can only enter that one.
And normally, there's someone standing outside the front door as kids walk in.
Is that something you may want to look at?
Yeah. I would, I would think so. Is it from 6:45 until, I'm not sure if it's 6:45 or not, it's either 6:45 or 7:00 until 7:45? I don't, the door, I don't think the door is monitored at the high school.
You relax, though. As long as it doesn't get trapped open, the door is currently set on time to open.
Yeah, we have- And I understand that, I mean, you just can't do everything. But really, I do think that's something that we need to look at, especially multiple points of entry. Is it for ease? What is the reason why we have these? And if we're going to be, if we're going to be as well-prepared as we possibly can, it's something that we have to look at. And maybe, maybe the answer is just what it is, you know? Or maybe that, maybe with all you born, you know, brainstorming and us, and whoever, the professionals, the police departments, maybe there is a better alternative. I don't know.
We did bring that up when we had a conference call yesterday. Both Lisa Elliott and I did ask that because that, the comment was made, I believe, by the lieutenant governor, it wasn't made by law enforcement about, about having multiple points of entry in that. And so I think we continue to have that conversation about how can you minimize it, yes, but then, you know, to say that if kids are parking back there, the only way that they can, like, so there's going to be some balance. When we do our grant, if it's adding more video cameras and having even that piece of it, even though it's not a live, there are different things. So I think it's, it's on our radar without a doubt. I don't have a simple answer right now, but I think it's worthy to continue to talk about, yeah.
Is there a committee or something going on for, like, developing a safety, security plan, or continuing to develop it, or anything like that?
Yep, I think it's our, yeah, as we work with fire, I think it's our H C Fire Police and Greenfield Fire Police and administrators, when we look at the building level stuff, Todd, Mike, myself, when we look at that.
So do you have an organized committee or a set time to meet or anything like that for these things? Because if so, I wouldn't mind sitting in on them to hear what's going on, or?
We haven't had a set one. When the police, so yesterday, get a call on a Sunday, hey, can we have a call? I mean, there wasn't, that was, there was a situation that caused that or precipitated that. As we're meeting right now, to fill in the safety grant, it requires that, letters of support or different things. So I would say that right now, it's been either at the request of the district, it's been at the request of the police department, they've had a situation or they wanted to do stuff, as we're preparing for what this looks like. And I would say right now, probably every two weeks, but it's not like every Tuesday at 10 o'clock right now. I don't think we're, that we're in that piece of it. I will tell you that in addition to that, even communicating, in our case, just because of the proximity and the shared law enforcement with the Greenfield School District, we also sort of look at their protocols to be able to look at that, or wherever it is in terms of neighboring things. So I would say that we look at some of that. But our committee, I would say, has been on every two weeks, but I wouldn't, it's not a set time, yeah.
Thank you.
I just had a question. When is the, and I know you've said it before, and I'm sure it's been on email, the ID scanner system for visitors, when is that going to?
Yep, so training on Friday for folks.
Okay, I heard you say that, and she goes in.
Yeah, I think we really, over the course of that, then next week, when we come back from Memorial Day weekend, we want to be able to at least get it out into our schools for June, to be able to have, if you want to call it a soft opening, let people kind of use it, and let them know, you know, this may take a few extra minutes if you're lucky. And then, you know, be in full force come, come the fall.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I put it in the letter to parents about they need to be prepared, but we talked about making signs in the, in the front glass by saying, be prepared if you don't have your driver's license, before they get all the way in and realize that that's going to be part of it. They better run back to their car or just wherever that is. So we want to really over-communicate that to folks if they don't typically come in the building with that. We anticipate that being a frustration for a while.
Photo ID required for building access?
Yeah.
Simple.
Yep. But it's a change and people don't like change.
Okay, thank you. So now, S W S A report.
Well, we met two weeks ago, I think, I believe, and Lisa did share last meeting that the director or acting director of the school safety program for the state of Wisconsin was at our meeting and took up a lion's share of the meeting. And I believe there were a lot of good questions, a lot of information that was, that we had questions about and didn't really know. And I think everybody came out of there really informed, he's a pretty straightforward guy. It was good. And that took up the lion's share of the meeting. We had some procedural stuff to do after the meeting, so. And I haven't, and I know Lisa has either, received any emails as to what is on the agenda for the next meeting, but it's always the second Tuesday of the month. So that's what I got.
Okay, F, just something new we're adding. It's the PTO reports for the board liaisons for the Edgerton Hills Corners Elementary and then the Whitnall Middle School PTOs. If you don't have anything or there wasn't a meeting, obviously we'll pass, but if anyone has something to add, now's the time to speak up. So anyone have anything to add?
Well, I was at the E S one a couple weeks ago as well. And it's funny that we talked about the new scanner system, because Chris and I would talk, and a lot of the, some of the parents that are there are in the schools quite a bit, and, you know, and actually, the president was like, well, I'm in here five, yeah, I know. And just like you say, it's about change. And so we kind of let them know that, you know, yeah, you might be here 12 times, but each time you're going to have to go through that, and that's just the way it is. And not, and because you are seen a lot, don't expect to be treated differently. And don't have your feelings hurt if you are called to do, and you, don't put the pressure on the person doing it. Just do it, play by the rules, and be done with it. I think that's a good rule for all of us, that we are no different to anybody else, and no matter how many times we're in a school, we have to give our ID. And a large portion of it was, was about the security and about the, the drill that we had. They, some of them participated, but it was a big discussion about that. And one of our big events that's going to close out the school year is the color run. And these women, and I'm going to say women, because it's really women except for John Cohen and myself and Chris, they know how to make money. Yeah, I'm telling you. So they, so they, so last year, they had to give, I don't know, 25% to the house to have the thing run. And, whoa, boy, when they saw that number, that was way too much, too much grease to give. Oh, not you, Chris, no. I didn't say you're greasing your pockets, no, I didn't, I didn't say that. Live TV, no. So, so they figured a way to cut them out and only give up about maybe 7%. So I'm telling you, these women. But, you know, I'll say, they spend it, and they spend it on that school, and they give it to the teachers, and they give it to worthy things. And so we're very blessed at Edgerton to have a good group of people, so that's it.
And the middle school, the same thing. The PTO hadn't been active for quite a long time, and they're getting up and running again, and a phenomenal group of parents, just getting in there, getting organized, getting things done. And it's so heartwarming to know that we have involved caring parents, even as the kids get older, when it's easier to, to cut back a little bit. The main topic of conversation for a little while was the evacuation drill. And there wasn't anyone who thought that it was a bad idea or that it went poorly. Everybody was really happy that it happened and that it was as smooth as it was. And they're looking forward to the end of the year, but the enthusiasm that they're ready to go for the fall again is just wonderful. So we are fortunate to have parents, we do.
And Bob was there, too?
He couldn't, he couldn't make it.
No, unfortunately.
I apologize.
No, that's fine, he was, he was intending to be there, yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was unable to attend, I had prior obligations. It was last week Tuesday, though.
Okay. All right, thank you. So on to G, monthly financials.
All right.
These are for April.
Yeah, these are for April, back to back. A couple of things I want to mention. First of all, next month, we will be coming forward with our preliminary budget for 1819. And so that gives us that, yeah, I know, that gives us, as a district, the authority to spend after July 1 through the certification of the budget and the levy in October. So be ready for that show. Second, as we're looking at the budget, I hope everyone got my email, and I smiled because it was good news. We are on budget for health insurance this year. Part of it was miscommunication, but it was very good to find, to find out. Now, it doesn't negate what happened last year, though those two numbers are still, if you would combine this year and last year, still very much trying to make up for last year still. That was a huge, a huge swing last year. But those ups and downs happened with self-funded. So very pleased now at where we currently stand. I still stand behind that. We had great months in January, February, and March. April was still a rough month, and I expect May and June to be higher as well, despite the point of where we are in the planned year. But we are tracking right towards budget, which is great. As far as any negative numbers on here, the two negatives that you see, one is district insurance, that's our property insurance. Part of that gets put onto Fund 27 and Fund 50, so that'll kind of balance out by the end of the year. The other negative you see on there is our principal interest payments for our short-term borrow. That's just higher rates and some extra fees that we saw from associated on there and this year. And we have a different process that we're going to go forward with for next year. Um, and we have a different process that we're going to go forward with for next year. Um, and as Lisa was talking about kind of where we are as far as budgeting and making decisions, um, you know, we're still in a really, we're, having the referendum pass, we're in a very fortunate position, uh, that we're going to have just a lot of financial, um, a, a lot of flexibility in what we do moving forward. And so as we talk about plans that are even outside of the referendum and, and what we do with, um, with potential, potential surpluses, um, we, we're going to have some flexibility to do some really nice things. And so, um, I'm excited to kind of put that forth next month and, and get your reaction to, to some of the things that we're going to be able to do.
So with the budget you're going to bring?
Yeah.
Because we're in the middle of the state budget, you know the numbers?
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty clean, like I said. Um, you know, we know what that revenue limit is, is essentially going to be. So when you add together taxes and state aid, we know what a bulk over eighty percent of our revenue is essentially going to be. Um, as far as where state aid lands and how much, what percentage the taxpayers have to pick up on the revenue limit and what percentage the state, there's still some fluctuation that occurs just because we compare ourselves with the rest of the state and where they spend, the districts spend. So there's, but for the most part, yeah, I feel really confident with where, um, the budget's going to be. More confident, uh, now than, than I was, uh, even just a couple of weeks ago.
So is there a, uh, a study you could do or that, I don't know, that would tell us if we're better off being self-funded and not being self-funded?
If you would take a look at the course of the last ten years, you would say we have been better off as self-funded than not self-funded.
Right, it's going to be, there's going to be like this.
It is.
Peaks and valleys.
Last year's going to happen. Last year's going to happen and the year before that's going to happen. And then this year where we're essentially, yes, those peaks and valleys have to be accepted. I think there's, um, there's certainly a, a question of where our, our total people on the plan. If you would ask our brokers, they would go, you could go either way. You really could. Um, but I think over the course of ten years and looking at, at what has been accomplished through self-funded in light of the last couple of weeks, um, I would say that self-funded is still the way to go.
For one, you're not paying a fee to a company.
Correct, correct.
And that fee can't be small.
It's not small.
But you, but you would, you, you still wouldn't be a level number because
Essentially.
if you were way up one year, they're going to get, they're going to get you the next year.
They are.
Right.
They are. They're going to get you the next year, correct. Um, you know, essentially what we're paying for right now is only the stop-loss fee, which is that limit that any individual can hit. That's the insurance that we're paying for essentially. Um, when you look at those administrative fees and then to push, to put our, you know, bills through Anthem.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's what we're paying for. The other half, it's essentially half. The other half of the administrative fees don't exist. So you save there.
Well, I'm glad that you're looking at the, the long-term and you looked at that. That's good.
It's, uh, it was, uh, it was a good weekend.
Thank you.
So when Lisa talked earlier about building some of those models internally, this is an area that.
Oh, man, my health insurance model is so good right now.
It's going to benefit.
Yeah, it's so good. It's so good.
So, wait, you know, where, where is that? Because there is a certain amount of unpredictability.
Yeah, there is. I, but, but that unpredictability, listen, there were just some things that were left out of the model. Is, is essentially what, what it was. Um, and while there is that uncertainty, um, the, the flo- the ups and down flows are the uncertainty. The model is the uncertainty. It's the inputs that go in there that will always cause some uncertainty. For example, all the way through November, if you look through the model, we were on the same pace as last year, which that would have been scary as I was reporting. Um, but as January, February, March came better and then some of those variables became clear on our side of what was not in the model, the picture we can get right again. So
Right.
um, I feel really good with where we are, um, moving forward, really good.
So how much can the company help inform and analyze the claims? Because my thought is, is that you know that if, if this year, heaven forbid, someone's diagnosed with a long-term illness, that you know that healthcare costs are going to be higher because we're taking that employee into the mix as opposed to a minor injury that was just, that was just a one-shot expense and then they're healed and they're released and we're done with the expenses for that. So the claims analysis portion to inform that model, how, how are you being supported with the data and how is that helping?
So what, what we get is a top ten claims. We don't have any names associated with anything, uh, of course. But we get a top ten claims, um, list and, and what those diagnoses are. Again, no names and we don't really,
Need to know.
when you're looking at the data, you don't need to know. Um, and so what, what is interesting is over the past now couple of years, we've essentially had the same amount and the same number of the high-cost claims. It's those other, it's been the, the consumer piece that seems to drive really the highs and the lows in the past couple of years.
So that's an education component.
It is an educational component.
To help that.
It is. You know, th- this year we, we shrunk down the number of plans. As I said, we tried to give a greater incentive to be in the higher deductible plan, um, by attaching the H S A only to the higher deductible plan so that you get a contribution from the district, but you have more out of pocket and if you have more out of pocket, you hopefully are thinking more about your,
How you spend it.
your, how, how you're going to spend it. Yep. So we, we try to make some of those changes. Um, but it is, we've done, uh, the last three months, we've done some wellness activities across all three districts. Um, and that was dollars that we got from Anthem and Haze to put towards those pieces. We hope to continue that moving forward, but we'll see how that, the participation.
So it's coming along.
We're trying, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a huge, when you, when you look at what health insurance is, next to salaries, that's your basic spending. So you have to, um, put some time into it and then a little strategic, strategically try to, to look for. So, um, again, I'm, I'm, I know I've addressed this already. I'm, I'm very pleased with the number that we have in place. I'm pleased with the health insurance number that is in place for next year, that the budget is able to support. And I say it that way because now with the new model, by February, March, we should have a pretty accurate picture of what's left with new models. And now we're going to be able to make some, uh, purchasing decisions much earlier before the end of the fiscal year that if we have the room to do some things fiscally before June thirtieth, we'll be able to. So, um, I just feel good about where we're at.
Anything else? Okay. On to eight items for future consideration. Fantastic. Onto nine announcements.
Uh, I went to the K five field trip to, for Hales Corners to the school forest. And I do have to say, our high schoolers were just spectacular running the show there, especially with, I don't know, like a hundred five and six-year-olds running around. They commanded attention pretty well and it was just really well put together. Another thing, I don't know that anybody in that elementary school eats those steamed peas. I tried to survey the lunchroom, didn't see anybody eating them. Just an observation.
You're not disguising them.
Yeah, I hate them a lot.
Yeah, I noticed.
You have to.
Did you start flinging them at people?
I just avoided them in general.
Did you?
I wasn't, I was not, you know, that excited for the homemade macaroni and cheese. Now, if I were to go there this Thursday for pizza dipper's, then you got my attention.
There you go. Nice. Any other announcements?
Find a line there.
Uh, just a reminder, back-to-back meetings next month. Uh, look, check your emails over the next week or so. Um, there'll be a precursor for some things we're going to have to do next, uh, in June. So just to be prepared, uh, looking forward to that. Come July, there will be a, how do I want to phrase it?
Business retreat or workshop?
A retreat slash workshop like we've had in the past. Um, that'll be one of the meetings. So we won't be adding a third meeting for the month. That'll be one of the two meetings in July. So I'll take care of that. Anything else?
I don't think so.
No. And then, uh.
Graduation.
Yeah, graduation. Um, Whitno baseball team is playing a game on June seventh at five o'clock at Miller Park. So anybody, if you're around on that night, check out the baseball team there. It's free or? Free game. So chance to go cheer on the baseball team and anything else? Senior award ceremony is tomorrow night. Band concert's Thursday night.
Orchestra's Wednesday night, I think, right?
What is that?
I think orchestra Wednesday night.
Chorus, chorus on Tuesdays, orchestra.
You could go catch.
Choirs are now, yeah.
Jazz band the next Tuesday.
Yeah, so senior parents, an email went out last week from Charlie with all the listing of the times and dates and everything that's going on. So if you didn't see it, I know we sent it again to the seniors. Ask your son or daughter to forward it to you as a list of all the times, dates and everything. Um, if you didn't see that, so you can see what's going on with your son or daughter. So, um, that's it. And now we are going to be doing a Whitno High School classrooms tour. So, thank you.